Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this September 7th work session of the Keystone Keystone Central School District School Board to order. First thing we'll do is a flag salute and a moment of silence.
Follow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Elling.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Knopf. Mr. Coke.
President.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Scholz.
Here.
And Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Seven members present.
Alrighty, so um, looks like first thing we have on on deck is a presentation. Uh, this is a presentation from a Bucktail High School student.
So um, I'd like to and get to hold it there.
Okay.
So I'd like to welcome this evening Martin Lewis. Martin is a junior at Bucktail High School. Martin and I have been working together on a couple of things over the last year. Um, he, many of you might know that he, his name sounds familiar to you for members because you may have seen him log in to some of our meetings, committee meetings. He's very interested in government. And so I selected him tonight to give a welcome on behalf of the Bucktail team body.
So the question I made at the place when I wrote this, I thought, although we were only a week into this school here, it was very hard to find things to talk about for this. We had a very good start to this full year. Our athletics started out very strong with the multi new security, very close one of the best branch. A very, very nerve wracking game, which puts us at two and O first time in a very long time. Bucktail tennis team started out the year strong again, but like undefeated so far this season. Um, Bucktail reading under the lights was a success for the 70 kids, attendance and their parents and playing more older students to read them. Bucktail also held its second annual back to school line on August 8th with over a hundred students in attendance. The back to school line is a great way for new students to have, to meet and get know existing students. Also, new things are also happening this year in the high school. There are new opportunities for students to express and address themselves. Like the Bucktail drama club is potentially going to turn next year. There is going to be a renewed student government and Mr. Katelyn is more than very hard to expand our movement. That's all I have to ask.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Very informative and we appreciate you doing what you're doing.
That was very good and it did sound like you wrote it. So thank you very much.
Very perfection. Okay, next thing that we're going to be doing is a hearing of the visitors and I see that we have John Share. Do you have a stand on the black square so camera can see it? There you go.
I'll just keep this brief. Most of y'all know by now prior to the board board issue from that last Friday night. Uh, I know Mr. Cato is new and he got a baptism by fire there Friday night. I've been involved here at school, youth sports, since I moved back here, guitar and the airport, nineteen ninety nine. Team gang, P A system, you name it. Coach central Pennsylvania basketball, little league baseball, I used to. But ever since I've been here, there's always been an issue down here in the first half game with stuff not being ready. And I think the problem is that no one seems to know whose job it is. Anytime you ask them, oh, it's not my job. It's not my job. But how hard is it to go down and just make stuff work? Make sure it works on Wednesday or Thursday prior to the 16th. I don't think it's that much to ask. Uh, and the P A system is another issue. Uh, I've done the P A system for years down there. There's four speakers, only two of them working. And the only people could hear you separate in front of the press conference. Anybody else down that field cannot hear a thing you're saying. So there's a couple of small items I feel could be addressed. I know everybody bitches about Central Mountain. Elder turds and all that. And I don't bitch about that stuff. I think they deserve their four A school. They deserve turds. It's a multiple use field. But I think we can uh, do with a decent P A system and make sure our board works on Friday night. And the other thing with the scoreboard, I walked over there and checked it out. I'm too electrician. They ran out of power from the baseball scoreboard to the football scoreboard. Was the extension cord underground? I don't think it would pass any electrical.
What?
Yes. Uh, my second item on agenda here tonight are the Bucktail basketball coaching jobs. On the boy side, the previous head coach was let go back in February. We just now, I guess a week and a half ago or so, named the new Bucktail boys head coach. Why has it taken so long to get these jobs out on the streets if people can apply for it? Uh, there's still a pre assistant basketball job coaches that need to be hired and the season's rapidly approaching. And on the girl's side, it's even worse. They just closed the announcement on Monday for the head coach. They're going to start practicing in mid October and they have no coaches for girl basketball team for junior highs. So I don't know what the delay is. I know the assistant superintendent, he got fired one day. His job was posted twenty four hours later. Why does it take so long to get those jobs to people to apply? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we will have the superintendent's report. Dr. Martin.
And are those microphones picking me up without the handheld? Mr. Dietrich, can you hear me from my seat or do I need the microphone?
No, I can definitely hear.
I can hear you very clearly.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the first thing I wanted to do just before tonight's meeting, we had our administrative team meeting here in the Bucktail library. And one of the things that we did at our meeting was kind of go around the room and ask each of the principals how their opening day went with their staff and with their students and just the opening of the year in general. Um, every one of our administrators that was here tonight expressed that they thought this was the the smoothest and best opening we've had uh, since before COVID. And it felt like there was a lot of energy back and I just want to thank our administrative team for the amount of work and hours and days that they put in working together to make sure that the opening day for staff was energizing, welcoming, and also for the same for the students. Um, I was able to see, say we get to every building on the opening day for staff as well as the opening day for students. Saw a lot of energy and I saw the administrative team using things that they learned either in our session or our learning times together or things that they got from conferences that they attended. Um, they also reported that many of the staff members expressed their appreciation for the opening day and how things went. Um, I also wanted to to mention that several board members have asked for an update on the cell phone policy enforcement and how that's going. And so I'm checking in with the admin team and also checking in on the disciplinary software that we track all of the of all of the disciplinary incidents. Um, so what are we in school a week? Um, district wide, elementary to kindergarten to twelfth grade, so far only seven infractions of cell phone violations. Um, the staff has really understood because of the work that the administrative team have done with them about the consistency and the need for the consistency of the enforcement. I noticed I had a couple of kids make comments to me on the first day. And we really kind of hit that home that if you're not going to adhere to this policy, cell phones could be banned completely. And so I just want to say thank you not only to the admin team, to the staff, but also to the students who are adhering to what we're asking you to do and to the parents and families who are supporting this notion. Uh, we're seeing some big improvements already and the hardest task is going to be to maintain this for um, another one hundred and seventy five school days. So um, again, just I know some board members had asked about that. So I wanted to give you an update. Um, also, reading under the lights, Martin mentioned that was already held at Bucktail. Um, it was a hot evening, but again, I think of over seventy people showed up for that and it's a great night for families. It's part of the Keystone Cares Initiative. And the evening at Central Mountain will be held on Thursday evening, the fourteenth this upcoming week. One additional announcement, I just want to remind everybody, it's posted on our website with all the information, but um, we had promised in the spring when we met with the families and the community members uh, regarding the Liberty Curtain Elementary School Project that we would give them an update. And that meeting is being held on Monday evening at six o'clock, the Liberty Curtain Multi Purpose Room. So everybody is welcome to attend. That's all I have for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next thing on the list is committee reports. Uh, first is facilities. Jeff?
All right.
Think you got to hold it in.
Oh, here. All right. It didn't work again at all. But thank you, Mr. Bradley. We held our first facilities meeting uh, since back in the spring on August twenty seventh. We had several items on the agenda discussed. First item was one that was brought up several months ago by some residents of the city states area. They had some concerns that were pointing about some water runoff that was running into the backyard of some of the particularly ones in there in the back of the drive where condos back there and they uh, they kind of shoot super violence kind of where things came to one of our meetings back in March. And they wanted us to see if there was something that the school district could do about it. Because they felt that a lot of runoff was coming from the our property, but in those schools. So we uh, we have asked Mr. Salo Department Services person to check. If we had to order a survey, which had been done in the meantime, and we just discovered and was his opinion that none of it runoff was was actually our responsibility. And if we do, we have on occasions, even though it's not our responsibility necessarily, there would be quite possibly to do that in this group. So what we decided to do was have Dr. Martin and Mr. Salo meet with somebody, people from the most of the states, some of the points that have our concern originally. Explain what we found in the survey and uh, see what they want, what they want to say. That's what we stay with in the future and soon. Second thing we talked about, we have a ten year facility that has been developed by by the whole administrative team. I want to thank all of the principals and everybody police that either anybody prioritized the needs for the building. That really helps us. And I know we, if we did go back and getting into the year, and I think this group would be instead of being devised. Committee's been a little bit over there with some reputations. Some things that were on there that we didn't want to say about how to. So we're going to review that, get some you know, bring it to the board hopefully soon. Or maybe since next month. Third thing, we're going to go extend the playground fence at Woodward Elementary. There's already our defense there. We need to closing, say in your business, goes and expresses like playground areas of that. That I think will be on the agenda tonight for your consideration. It's one of the list. The next thing is the road parking lot. We got an update on that from Salo. And at that point, it hadn't quite been yet. I thought it was going to be ready to go start school with that. That the case that I haven't gone by the last few days.
Yeah, so everything's great. It uh, it got finished September or I'm sorry, August twenty ninth, I think it was, finished up and it was just the time the first day. Everything looks great. And the lines are all completed. Everything looks worked out very well. So we greatly appreciated. Union has appreciated it. Sapp has appreciated it. So definitely opened up all in the street as well.
Right. I know that that was a real bottleneck there. And it was kind of reaching on the residents and that. So I think that we could that situation out of the grid. So thank you. Everybody was involved in that. There were two other items we had on the agenda. We talked about the the Bucktail, it was a lot of renovation, whatever drawings and designs proposed for that. A couple of possible changes to that. And I think that Rob, we will get some prices for that if we
I'm sorry, Rob. It, we can't hear you, please.
He said that he was, he's hoping to have some prices for us for the next quarter.
Oh, super terrific. Thank you.
The last item on the, oh, by the way, the uh, meantime, the it's the Bucktail. And then he's upstairs, stairs block room. In the meantime, all these renovations have been done. That's already been, you know, it's ready to go. The last thing on the agenda, and this is uh, one sort of update right now. And that's the Liberty Curtain project update. Architect, um, Jeff Straub from Factory Associates came and gave us a presentation and updated the property report on that project. He gave us a couple of things that they've done. They have, they designed a little bit location of the school. And they, he gave us this interest in some of the exterior design and hoping I thought, maybe thought of a very good fact that was the actual video, saw the guy. Or running in the regions. And it was really pretty cool. It was just like you're walking through the school and it's pretty impressive. Um, he also said it did differently, but it was um, the important thing was that he assured us that you're on schedule for the bids. It's not much to love if you pull the board. And keep that part of the schedule and so forth, so good. So and as Dr. Martin mentioned earlier, there will be a presentation and open house kind of thing at the school. I think it was September eleventh. It was eight next this coming month. So uh, I think the, it'll give the all the parents and the rest, the community members of with the current school area, chance to see where we are at this point. So we're excited about that. So um, and with that, that's pretty much it. We've had, media has a lot of, a lot going on. I think there's an act or a court that everyone is out tomorrow. It's a little more in your show and there may only be, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I will also echo what he said. We uh, saw what that school will look like through that video and it is incredible. So I think the community will be very happy with what they're uh, going to be getting up there.
Mr. President, Vice President?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if it's something wrong with the mic that Jeff was using or maybe it's me, I don't know, but I really hard time making out what Jeff was saying. I don't know if Richard and Mrs. Lynch had that problem or not. Maybe it's my laptop. I don't know, but I could hear his voice, but I had trouble hearing what he was saying, making it out. It sounded like it was an echo.
Okay, well, Mr. Coke.
He had a similar problem.
There, there is some feedback going on. I mean, I have my volume way up, but there is, there is feedback. So it could be clearer, but I am catching what you're hearing and what you're saying. I'm sorry, but I understand what Mr. Coke is saying unless, you know, so.
What we're going to do from here on out, we're not going to have the uh, the directors up here utilize the microphones. We actually have a very sensitive microphone up here. And if you can't hear what somebody's saying, then let us know. But I think Tracy and Jeff, they're in between two sets of these microphones. You guys ought to be able to pick them up.
Yeah, I, I, I heard. I was able to make it out, but it was a little bit echoey. Yeah, I did hear what he was saying. I mean, I understood what he was saying, but it's definitely echoing.
Yeah, it's probably the feet two separate inputs. So, okay. All right. Let's move on. Okay, next we have finance committee.
Could, could, could we back up a little bit to the Liberty Curtain, please? Is that all right? I had one.
Okay, go ahead.
One, one comment. I, I wanted to say that I had a member of the public call me and specifically talk to me about that. Um, the individual lives in that region and uh, the individual talked to me extensively about it. Um, there was a concern about the exterior design looking to be expensive. Um, I believe there's some sort of expensive facade on the front of the building. And that same individual mentioned to me that uh, there was a concern about the number of, let's see, I think it was uh, art rooms and music rooms and not sharing the same room for those things. Um, I, I wanted to pass along that concern and I'll make a comment myself. Um, I, I agree with not having an expensive facade. But I also disagree with the member of the public in regard to the not sharing of rooms. Having myself been in a very small elementary school that was built in nineteen fourteen, we had one room that we shared for cafeteria, gym, arts and music. Um, and you know, I think I turned out all right. Um, so I, I will say my preference would be to spend as little money as possible. Um, but anyhow, I wanted to mainly pass along the concerns for the member of the public, which was not to have shared rooms for art and music. And also not to have an expensive facade on the exterior of the building. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
So just a reminder to all board members and members of the public, there is an email address that everybody can provide input or questions. We monitor that regularly and it's lcproject@kcsd.us. So if you can't, um, you know, not sure, you can email that with questions, comments and we'll get back to you. Uh, that's been up, Brett, how long has that been? So it's been up for eleven. So thanks, Brett. For those of you who weren't, Brett wasn't near the microphone. So we've had that email address live, as Brett recalls, since our October public meeting, the first meeting we had on the Liberty Curtain Project. And the last time anybody has sent anything into it was in April, following our, our last public meeting. So it's always a good reminder that, that people can, can email stuff in. We share that information with the board and Facility Committee as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's try this again. Let's move on to the finance committee. Anybody want to speak to that?
I can try if else wants to. Um, we did talk about the business privileged tax resolution and a real estate tax refund. Both of those items are on this evening's agenda um, for the full board. We did discuss a little bit about the twenty three, twenty four budget update with regards to the governor's budget being signed. Um, we talked about um, an interest update. We've had to ask the board uh, several months ago to consider an investment opportunity. And we were, um, Mrs. Ms. McIntyre provided an update on how those funds are going. And then we also talked a little bit about the Liberty Curtain financing options. Um, looking at bonds potentially of two separate bonds because the way that the bond financing is going is actually opposite of what you would think it is. The lower the bond under ten million dollars gets better interest rates than bonds over uh, ten million dollars. And, and we have three years to spend the bond money. So since the project would cross over multiple years, we'd be looking at two different bonds of lower amounts potentially, but also gave the board options about um, what do they want to use any of their reserve funds for? Or if they want to earmark any additional reserves specifically for the project or maybe a part of the project, such as the demolition of the building um, following the new construction. So I'm just looking at a variety of financing options and the direction we were told is to, to go ahead and look into that with bond counsel and come up with those options. So that was kind of the direction we were going for the, the project booklet at this point. And then it's also time to put in an energy rate lock because our previous three year rate lock was expired or is expiring.
Yay. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Martin. Um, next Personnel Committee.
So a quick update on the searches for the assistant superintendent and superintendent. Um, Dr. Martin's been leading the search for the assistant superintendent. She has some applications. And interviews will be starting the week of September nineteenth. Um, so hopefully we will have somebody on the agenda by October, right? Yeah, we have over, over forty stakeholders have been invited to participate in the, the panel interviews for that evening. Uh, students to community members and all different, you know, parents, uh, board members, staff members. And also tried to ensure that we had representation from all areas of the geographically large district represented on that panel. And then you'll also see on tonight's agenda is a contract with Duraco Education Consulting. We would like to work with them to lead the superintendent's search. It's going to be a very quick search. Um, we're hoping to have somebody in place on the agenda for November. Um, so the public, the community should be on the lookout for focus groups and any community meetings that consultants and the uh, the board of directors will be working together and whole to get input from the public on what they want to see in our next superintendent.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay, next thing we're going to be looking at is reports. Okay, we have the treasurer's report. Anybody have any questions on that? Enrollment report. That's the next item. Any questions, comments? All right. Next, we're looking at a PSBA officer elections. Now, we're going to have to do these elections, but um, it's not really an election because there's only one candidate in each one of these places. So it's basically you say yes or no and so, all right. Next we have is a real estate tax fund. Any questions? Comments? Okay.
Um, yeah, there should be some comments. Real estate tax refund. Uh, I know we discussed that at the finance committee, but Nick, if I could ask you to come forward and Real estate tax refund, uh I know we discussed that at the Finance Committee, but Nick, if I could ask you to come forward and just give a quick explanation on that. Just stand, as long as you stand close to this disc, everyone should hear you.
Try to do that without a table here, but I think I'll be okay. Um, the real estate tax refund isn't something that the board usually handles. Generally, when there's change in a property assessment, um, assessment gets us that in the same year, and we can do the exoneration within that same year. Um, so there's nothing that the board needs to handle. But this was a property that was torn down in March of twenty-two. It should have been caught by the Assessment Office for the July twenty-two bills. It was not. And this, to make it a little more complicated, the property sold in August of twenty-two, so after the school bills came out. Um, the new owner since August twenty-two has asked for a refund based on the portion of assessment for the property that was no longer there, but only since that person owned it in August of twenty-two. So it's really about an eleven-month refund um for that property, for the assessment on that property. That wasn't there. Since those taxes have already been collected and turned over to the school district, we can't do that through an exoneration, so we need school board approval to do that as a refund. Um, that total amount after the calculation is uh two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Sounds like a no-brainer, so.
It's owed to the taxpayer, and so we're recommending that you refund it.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
The Good Speaker identify himself. Just curious to know who he is.
I apologize. I'm Nick Grimes and I'm the supervisor for the Tax Office.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Nick, if you could stay here for the next one, I think, um, I know that some board members had questions about this when it showed up on the uh Finance Committee, and so um it may be wise just to explain what the Business Privilege Tax Resolution is all about, so that all board members are aware.
Yes, I'll uh take an extra minute to go through this. Um, when I presented this to the Finance Committee, one of the things they asked was to do a cost-benefit analysis. I'd like to actually take a step back and give you a little more broad overview, and one of the reasons why we can't really do that. Um, so this amendment is to change the Business Privilege Tax Code to allow for both civil and criminal enforcement. Um, and then, and that sounds a little scary, but I'd like to give you a concept of what that really means. Um, and it's not asking us to only go with criminal enforcement, which is why we can't really do a cost-benefit analysis, because there's times that that doesn't make sense, and the civil enforcement does make more sense. Um, so the criminal enforcement is actually how we handle earned income tax currently. That's what Act thirty-two of the state allows us to do for earned income tax. That's how we handle enforcement um of violations with the earned income tax. It's also actually how the school district handled business privilege tax prior to twenty-eighteen. Um, for those of you who recall in twenty-eighteen, business privilege tax, there was a little bit of a remodel to the rules and regulations and to the ordinances. Um, before it was only criminal enforcement. After the changes, it was only civil enforcement. Um, I think that was a little bit of an oversight and drafting, and I really believe that both methods should be an option, because there's times that one is more efficient or effective than the other. Um, so it's, it's really just a tool, because there's times that the Court of Common Pleas makes most sense. There's times that civil enforcement through the magistrate makes more sense. And there's time that criminal enforcement through the magistrate makes more sense. And what I'd like to do is just walk you through the difference between civil and criminal, so you get an idea of why one makes more sense than the other in certain instances. Um, so for a civil complaint, if a taxpayer is not in compliance with the tax laws set by the school district and by the state, um, we would file a civil complaint with the magistrate, or if it's a large enough dollar amount with the Court of Common Pleas. Um, we would pay a filing fee to file that complaint, um, and then the Court of Common Pleas, that would be a very formal complaint. Um, in the complaint, we would seek the maximum fines um based on the ordinance with, which is five hundred dollars. We would also seek attorney's fees and court costs. And if we get a judgment in our favor, we can recover those costs in most cases. The court would then serve the complaint, or we could use a constable. There's some costs and time associated with that. After a hearing, if we're awarded a judgment, we would transfer that judgment to the court. If it's unpaid, we'd file a lien against the business. Um, we have the opportunity to garnish wages, garnish um bank accounts. Um, and if settled, which is always what we hope to get in these cases, we can withdraw the complaint and waive those fines. That's the civil process, and that's how it's outlined now in the Business Privilege Tax Ordinance for the School District. The criminal process is similar, and actually to a bystander, you probably wouldn't even notice the difference in a lot of cases, um, with the exception of the difference between the Court of Common Pleas filings and then a, and a criminal complaint. But everything in the start of that is relatively the same, except for there's no filing cost. Um, so to be able to file that complaint, there's no upfront cost to the school district. And the other major difference is with the judgment that's issued by the court. With the criminal complaints, if the school district is successful, um, the court actually imposes those fines and the court collects those and then remits those to the school district. Um, and, and there's pros and cons to that depending on the circumstance. So I'd like to um, actually, a couple other differences. The one thing that I really want to highlight is, in the civil process, we would usually have in the complaint five hundred dollars in fines. That's what's authorized in the statute. That's what we would ask, because of the collection time, because of the cost associated upfront and after the process. And it also is an incentive to get people to, even in compliance before a hearing, instead of taking both parties' times to go through a hearing, if they settle that, we can withdraw the complaint and get rid of all those fines. Through the criminal process, we would suggest fines to the magistrate, but we don't have control over that. The magistrate has control over that. Um, we would suggest that if it's settled before the hearing, that there would be no fines. Um, we would also suggest if it's a first-time offense, the fines would be very minimal, maybe twenty-five dollars. Um, but the magistrate would have every right to assess five hundred dollars in fines if he or she would want to. That's, that's out of our care in the criminal process. Okay, um, and I'd like to walk you through a, a not-so-uncommon issue, just to highlight where one method is more efficient than the other. So if you pretend, and I have to use hypotheticals, because we can't talk about real businesses, but if you pretend a big box store comes into Bald Eagle Township around many other big box stores, you know, they might do a hundred million dollars in sales. And when they move into the district, we may send them letter after letter after letter, which they may ignore, ignore, and ignore. Um, if that happens, we would then schedule an audit. If the taxpayer doesn't comply with the audit, which is required by state law and Eastern Central law, at that point in time, we, we'd really be stuck if we didn't have a criminal process. Um, with the civil process, we could file a complaint, seek a fifty-dollar fine, if you will, for a failure to appear for audit. But it's, it's easier to take that through the criminal process and suggest to the court that there is a smaller fine associated there. And that usually gets a taxpayer's attention enough to get compliance, which is the entire goal of this. The goal is not fines, it's not fees, it's not, you know, to harm anybody. The goal is just compliance with the law. Um, in the civil route, we would probably have to ask for five hundred dollars in fines. Um, we'd have to file complaints, take the time and money to file the complaints, transfer the judgment, file liens, all of that. Um, and with any, any judgment assessed through the criminal process, which the court collects, they also have to allow those individuals to pay on a schedule that fits their needs, which may be very lengthy in time, which we don't have control over, but it's also based on the economic means of that individual. But other times, that criminal process is not the best. So really, why we feel that we need both processes is so that we can identify each individual time that we need some sort of enforcement action um to get people in compliance and use the one that's, that's the best method. Like I said, I know it sounds a little scary, but it's really, it's what the school district used before. It's what many other business privileged jurisdictions use. Um, all of York County, all of Adams County, like Holman County, um, in the southeast where there's a lot of business privileged jurisdictions, um, many of them use that. And it's also what the state uses to enforce state tax laws. Um, even our local magistrates have seen people, you know, come in for not filing or not paying certain uh taxes that are required to the state, and they go through the same process. So um, what we're asking is to help with the compliance. We're not asking for anything unusual or unheard of. We're just asking for the tool to have both methods available to us, to use the one that's most efficient and effective, depending on the specific circumstance.
Okay, very good.
And I can wait here for a minute if you'd like me to, in case there's questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question, maybe in comment, maybe more than a question. Um, my comment is I, I am not in favor of the criminalization of the tax collection process for the business privileged tax. Uh, another comment, I do not believe it is a fair and appropriate tax, because it is based on gross receipts rather than on income. I am a past business owner. I, I understand the way the tax works. I do not appreciate it. I think it is grossly unfair. And I will further state that, and go on the record stating that if, if we were to take a vote tonight, next week, a month from now, to repeal that tax, I would definitely support the repeal of that tax.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Roger. Um, I'll be honest with you, I would really like for the board to consider, however we have to do this, uh, just give a serious look at this tax and have a full discussion. Um, maybe this is something that's outdated and that maybe we should move forward and have a deep discussion about, is this good for our district? Is this tax good for our neighbors? Um, I, I, I would really like to have us have that conversation, because I've never heard anything positive from anyone in the community about it, and we're trying so hard to be a community public school, and I think this is one of three things that may not be helping with that. So be that as it may, I would like the Finance Committee to, um, he isn't here today, the chair, now Butch, um, to put it on the agenda, so we can really uh, start to have a serious twenty-first century conversation about this. This, but thank you. Um, and, and Nick, you always do an excellent job. You've given us incredible information. Um, so please, this is no reflection on you. This is something way beyond um, that, okay, Nick? So thank you for everything you do, man, okay?
Thank you, and I'm happy to participate in those conversations when you're ready.
Super terrific. We're counting on you, man.
All right, I think that's it. All right, thank you. Okay, next thing we have up is, um, what is it, the repository bids? Okay, anybody have any questions, comments about this? Okay, let's move on to the policy. Uh, looks like the Policy Committee has four policies up here. Uh,
There are, there are four policies up on first read. And we, we actually talked about a fifth policy in our committee meeting and tabled that. We'll bring that up again next week, which involves naming rights. But the other four policies you see there are on first read.
All right, Wayne, thank you very much. Anybody have any comments on that? None? All right, next, uh, we have the minutes. We have the minutes for the last words session, the uh voting meetings, the finance meetings, facilities, and the special voting meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, let's move on to business. Bills for payment. Anybody have any questions? Okay, next is parent transportation agreement. Anybody have any questions on this?
Um, I don't have a question. I just can say for items two, three, and four, um, these again are special transportations to, for students who um are being educated outside of the school district and um we would be running a van or bus for a single student um quite a distance. And so in these cases, the parents are agreeing to do the transport. Um, the keep safe is also because we do not have enough drivers or vans through our contracted services to meet the needs of these uh individuals. So this is the most cost-efficient way to provide the education that we need to have.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? No? Okay, next thing is UPMC Williamsport Agreement.
So may, you may have noticed, there's no attachment for this. I was hoping to have this um back. I, I did get it um earlier this afternoon. It looks like a pretty um general con- contract with contract language, and it provides an hourly rate for us to get services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy. Um, Liz, am I missing any of those two specific to this one from UPMC? Um, we have previously contracted with our intermediate unit for those services uh rather than having a full-time person, but um the IU is also having difficulty finding folks to fill those positions. And so um if we were not to enter into this contract with UPMC, we would be behind on providing those services to the students who need it the most. And so um what we'd be asking you to do, I, I, I've asked um our solicitor and also our business manager to review the contract, since I just got it today. I did not get it back in time to put on the agenda. But I would anticipate that I'll have that back. Um, it would go live with Monday's agenda. And again, it has hourly rates for those services. And um quite honestly, the UPMC costs were quite significantly better than what the IU was going to charge us for one day a week, um, was astronomical. Um, the other thing, we have been able to find a candidate for occupational therapy that we'd like to hire full-time. And if we are able to get that person on board and work in the school district, it would reduce the amount of hourly rate that we would need from UPMC. So I would suspect that we would be using UPMC more so in the fall semester and gradually less in the spring semester. You'll also notice when you get the contract that it's dated for um next week through the end of, or through the end or middle of July. The reason we left the middle of July on there is that we do have extended school year, which legally we have to provide for students with special needs who qualify. And speech and OT are typically part of those services. And so um being able to use those services through the ESY helps us finish up that extended school year program.
Okay, thank you very much. The next two items are the Act Thirty-four booklet and hearing for the Liberty Curtain Elementary Project.
So the Act Thirty-four booklet, um, again, we didn't have that yet. I wanted to put it on here, um, definitely, so that you know it's coming. It will go on your agenda as soon as I have it. Um, right now, that booklet is actually put together by the architect firm that we've been working with, which is Crabtree Roarball, in conjunction with the um our Bond Counsel, uh Piper Sandler. And I know they're working together to put the final details on here. Um, they can't put estimated numbers. They have to really drill down and put exact numbers. And so um it's pretty, I saw a sample booklet from another project, and I think it would go a long way to provide information to those who have had questions about the Liberty Curtain Project or wondering why we're doing that project. It also shows what other options were considered. Um, and then, of course, um, according to um Act Thirty-four, we'd be required to have a public hearing on that, and obviously some question-answer, and the architect, the uh Piper Sandler, along with our solicitor, would handle kind of sharing the information, and then um the presiding officer would entertain the public comment and questions. So um we'd like to get that scheduled for October fifth, I believe. Um, but again, if we don't have the booklet in time for next week, um, or we need to table it, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not at the mercy of them getting that to us uh at this point, but I didn't wanna, you know, I was hoping we'd have it by, by now or very latest early next week, but I don't. Still waiting on it.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next is the Woodward Playground Fence. Any comments?
We ran this through the um Facility Committee. We do have some students at Woodward who have, um, are students with autism, which also creates an additional safety hazard for students who flee. There's a wooded area there that creates uh an extra danger, and so um similar to the fence that we have here for the same reason at Renova Elementary, we'd like to um add, it's a coated chain link fence uh to match the existing fencing there, and it is behind the building.
Okay, very good.
It did come in uh a lot lower than we had anticipated on the bid.
Very good. I like lower.
Okay, next is learning without tiers. Comments?
This is the handwriting, actual handwriting, um, resource.
Okay.
I'm typing, handwriting, forming letters.
Good. Is cursive included in that?
Uh, no, it's for the kindergarten, first grade.
Still. All right, anyway, all right, moving on, next is the, the Rocco Education Consulting. Uh, comments on that? Questions?
Mr. Rogers.
This is not my neighborhood. It's Roger. Go ahead.
Yay, thank you. Um, excellent. We're moving quickly. Great as a team. Excellent meeting. Um, I did have some comments on the contract, and I don't know if the solicitor's already looked at it yet. And this is the final, and this is the draft. Hopefully, we're caught here, but if we could go to page two. Hopefully, we're caught here, but if we could go to page two on the contract, under phase two.
Go ahead.
I don't think anyone else wants to follow along, I'm just trying to let you know where I am, so you can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, in that first sentence under phase two, it seems to be sound restrictive, and it doesn't seem to support what we previously want to do is, this, the consultant is gonna interview all of us, they're gonna interview the public, administration, teachers. And then they're going to form, their analysis is then to form sort of this ideal candidate to fit here and now for the future for this, the district, but then, but then we throw this in there. So it sounds like we're asking them to do this, but then we're saying, but no, you gotta do this. So it says, with similar achievement and community context and size. Well, if they find a good candidate who's coming from a school district that's, doesn't have a similar student achievement level, and that isn't the same size, I mean technically, this contract is telling them, uh, we can't use that person as a candidate. So I'm trying to communicate this, please ask me if I'm unclear. So what I would do is, I would highly like it if our board could just delete that with similar achievement and community context and size, and we don't be, uh, restrictive there and just see what the consultant finds for us.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, if you want to go to page four, under article six, which is ownership of documents. Um, in the second sentence, um, it says, the material shall be distributed only among appropriate district personnel. Um, I mean, I'm leaving this up to the solicitor, shouldn't it be and school board directors? That we also see what the consultant has done, since the consultants are employee. Mister David Lindsay? Or maybe you could answer that, and, and this is putting you on the spot, I want to put you on the spot. So maybe, maybe the administrator, whoever's designing this contract could get with you under, um.
I don't think it restricts, in my opinion, it doesn't restrict the board from seeing those documents, because the authorized personnel in our situation would be the board secretary, and so the board secretary could then distribute to the board.
Also, I, I would note, I have not seen the contract, so I, I cannot offer an opinion as to any of Ms. Lynch's observations.
Okay, well, when you see the contract, okay. So then if we can go above on page four, um, under item, it's the very first line, under item two. Um, I'm still on page four, but I've moved up. Item two, um, I think that was discussed. Um, I, I'm not sure how I can word this, because it was an executive session, we were doing the interviews, but the second line says, printing, advertising, and travel costs will be billed to the district, estimated around two to four thousand. Now, I hope I can say this, that we did discuss this, and there was an agreement, you know, sort of that that was, uh, gonna be changed. I don't know how much further I can go with saying anything about it. Okay, so the, this listener will coordinate with Chair of the Committee and or maybe the Personnel Committee, and they can explain how that had been modified. Um, and then the next one is, I don't see anywhere in here, I know, um, we're trying to use less paper. So, um, I don't see anywhere in the contract where it states that, you know, digital communications, digital surveys, digital, digital, digital is preferred over hard copy printing. And if so, and if the consultant feels that there is a moment that that is the best way to do this, is to print copies of something, of course, you know, we, the flexibility, obviously, we need that, but it doesn't stipulate anywhere in here that digital is preferred paperless. Um, so that was, I know it sounds like a small thing, but in fact, you know, we're paying for any printing or paper, although it's a small thing in this big scheme of things. Um, it's also, it's twenty-first century, we, we, yeah, so, those are my comments. Um, I look forward to it. I think everyone did an excellent job, it was a great meeting, uh, when we look, looked at all the, um, contestants. So thank you, uh, Personnel Committee, it went well, and looking forward to seeing the final edition of this. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments, Elizabeth. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, personnel. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, nothing, we're moving on to the curricular, co-curricular, the athletics and student activities personnel. Anybody have any comments or questions? None? Okay, let's move on to the, uh, overnight field trip with varsity volleyball. Any comments, questions? Okay, next, uh, under negotiations, we have the MOU with Act ninety-three. Comments? Questions? None? Okay, so, uh, let's see here. Alright, that's basically it. Um, I will entertain a, uh, motion for adjournment. Okay. Um, second?
Uh, second.
Meeting adjourned. Also, I'd like to inform board members, we are going to be having a executive session right, well, right now, so, alright, we'll give it about ten minutes.
Do I, do I come in on this, stay here, or do I come in on the?
Come in on the executive session one.
Okay.
Thank you.